The January fourteenth, City Council Committee, the whole meeting in order, the clerk will call. Roll.
Borowitz.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Thank you. Under public comment this evening, we have someone who would like to address the council. Would Caitlin Welton please come up? Welcome, everybody tonight. Good to see you. Would you push the button? Oh, is it on? Okay. Green light means on. State your name and address for the record, please.
Caitlin Welton, ten forty-two Town Hall Road.
Okay. What would you like to visit with us about?
I was just under the impression, last time we were here, that we would be sent questions and comments about our presentation, and we didn't get any of those.
Okay. Well, we didn't receive any to forward, do you? So...
Uh.
I guess we're in the same boat.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need to get a motion to remove this from the table?
It's not on the table. It's on the table at council.
Okay. All right. So, we have first up for consideration ordinance four thirty-five H, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty zoning ordinance of municipal code discussing private residential coops. So... First of all, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, you don't need a motion to approve. This has already been forwarded to council.
Okay.
It's been tabled at council. It was asked, come back to committee for simple discussion.
Okay. So, we'll open the discussion. Who wants to go first? Alderman Stevens.
From listening to the young lady, I was wondering, the two young ladies that want to try to get this through, do either of them live in the city limits of Belvedere? No, neither one of you live in the city limits of Belvedere at all?
No.
And the high school that you go to is not in the city limits of Belvedere?
It is not.
So, what would be the... Moving this forward, what would it do for you to have chicken coops within the city limits of Belvedere?
Our whole thing was, we wanted to make adult classes with people about agriculture, because we saw in the city that this town is so involved with the agriculture, and we both feel that it got so far removed. And so, we wanted to teach people about it, and we had burning, we had conflict, and we kept it, and people got looking into it, and we were allowed to do so.
Okay. My fear is, when you leave the city limits of Belvedere going past Green Giant, you get right over the bridge, and you look down to your left at that mess. Thankfully, that's not in the city limits of Belvedere, and I don't want to see anything like that in the city of Belvedere. And I've already been in a couple neighborhoods over the last year or so here before this even came up, with people that have chickens running around from previous, with roosters crowing and with chickens running around.
In the city limits?
In the city limits.
Did you report them to our officer to inspect?
Nope. The neighbors, you know, they complained about it to someone. I don't know who, and nothing was ever done, so...
I don't know who they complained to either, because we have no record of any complaint that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Alderman Snow.
Okay. Like I stated before, I'm not anti-chicken. I just don't think it's a good idea to have them in the city limits. We... People move to a city, they realize there's no chickens. The people I've talked to believe it's going to cause problems, and there's a lot of concern when I talk to those people, that they don't want to be the one to have to call in about their neighbors having their chickens running all over the place, or having the rooster, or all the mess that may turn into looking pretty crappy and trashy. And I'm not a big fan of it, and if we move this forward, obviously, we don't vote on anything until next week, but if we are going to do that, when it does, which I'm going to vote no at this point, but we need to regulate it. You need to get a permit for the chickens. You need to get a building permit. You need to... The place needs to be subject to inspection at will of the city. They also need to make sure that the residence, before they get their permit, is up to standards, so you don't have a bunch of junk laying around and are already having violations. They need to be up to snuff, looking good, then potentially having it. I would just assume also have it as a special use, so that everybody within the two hundred and fifty radius gets notified, and if they have concerns and are at least willing to show up to voice their concern, so that you get more control over who's going to get them, and they have more skin in the game, and it may get... Make it much more, not difficult, but at least more of a process than to just, everybody just, hey, I'm just going to go down and have some chickens.
May I ask a question, Gina? What was the basic outline? It seemed to me that there were already some rules and ideas in place for regulating these coops, and what we had, when those were presented, there were some items that we had talked about, about the setbacks from the property lines and so forth and so on. That made it sound like we had no thoughts at all about how the chickens are going to be regulated, and I didn't think that was the case. Can you... Can you refresh my memory, please?
So, the proposed regulations is that all chickens must be in a outdoor shelter within an attached outdoor enclosure that's located in the rear yard and not closer than five feet to the side of rear yard lot lines. The outdoor shelter shall not exceed a hundred and twenty square feet. The maximum roof of the shelter and enclosure shall not be taller than eight feet. Chicken shall have access to an outdoor, attached outdoor enclosure that has fencing on all sides, including the top. The entire area of the shelter and enclosure shall be maintained in sanitary condition, provided with adequate ventilation. No person shall keep or harbor any rooster over the age of six months. If the rooster becomes vocal or becomes aggressive prior to the six months, it shall be removed immediately. No more than five chickens per lot. Chickens cannot run large on the property, and no slaughtering of any poultry outdoors on any lot. I believe what Alderman Snow, he wants building permits for the coops and site plans and access for inspections, which although this has coop regulations and chicken restrictions, it doesn't have that. As far as chickens running wild, code enforcement, on occasion, very rare occasion, will get chicken calls, and we believe one of the problems right now is that those that are hiding chickens in the city do so in their garage, and then when they open up their garage, the chickens escape, because they don't have a coop, they don't have an enclosure, they don't have any way to really contain them. This would make it containable. It also prevents roosters, which are the majority of the problems, limited to five, so it would not look like the property that Mr. Alderman Stevens is describing, because that is a mess of a property. There's no denying that. And code enforcement, if they can visually see a rooster, because you can't enforce something that you haven't verified, especially if it goes to court, you, you know, you can't go before a judge and say, I've never seen it, but we're enforcing it. There was actually a retired firefighter that had a chicken coop, and that, those chickens had to be rehomed, that chick... That coop was removed. So, if something that can be verified, it does get enforced. When it's just a rumor, or can't be verified, or there's no specific address, which is how a lot of complaints come in, there's little enforcement can do if they can't validate it. But those that are, they do get enforced at the moment.
Would you... Excuse me just a moment. Would you speak to also the enforcing agency that is going to help us with issues with the chicken coops?
So, the overseeing agency for chickens would be the Illinois Department of Ag. There is a person assigned to Boone County that deals with livestock, horse neglect, sheep neglect, chicken neglect, issues like that. They would come in, so if there was someone complaining, or someone that staff thought was not keeping it sanitary, was not... Was neglecting them, we would then contact the Department of Ag to help with the investigation, because they obviously are more well-versed in chickens than staff is at the moment.
The other aldermen that have not commented yet? Alderman Crawford?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you guys for coming here from the high school and want something like this. I think... I think it, myself, it's a good thing. I think there would be such a small percentage that wants chickens in the city limit. I can't believe there'd be many, because they're going to put a lot of restrictions on you. And I agree with Alderman Stevens about the place down on Lawrenceville. But that place on Lawrenceville, there's rooster fights, there's so much stuff you wouldn't believe down there, but these guys don't seem like they want to do something like that. So, you have my vote.
Okay. Alderman Frank?
Well, I've had occasion to let chickens out and put them back in at night, and one thing you have to be careful of is a lot of coyotes will come for the chickens, and it might bring my... More coyotes coming into town.
Alderman Brooks?
As Mr. Mayor, I... George mentioned down by the river there at Green Giant. You've got green giants trying to improve their grounds there to be a... Look clean and everything, and then you go across the river and you got a bunch, it's like a shanty town, you'd see over in China or something, you know? Put together with cardboard boxes and scrap, you know, lumber, lumber, and it is disgrace. And it's not right to the... To the animals that are being contained there. They've got to be freezing. I mean, Jesus, this weather like this. But anyway, I would think that perhaps our representatives on the city council, or on the city-county coordinating committee, could get together with the county, because that is in the county, and perhaps come about a solution to that mess down there. Whatever it may be, they would have my backing on it, I'll tell you that. I drive by there every day, and I just look and shake my head. Well, I think it's time that somebody does something about it.
At that point, there's going to be about... What... What's the cost of the bridge? The bridge replacement there by Green Giant?
I think it's what, in the three to five million dollar range?
Yeah. So, there's going to be a big construction project. I agree that that's an eyesore, but I would point out, too, if any of you have ever been traveled to rural Mexico, that's how they put together their farms, because they scrounge everything that they can to build shelters for their animals. It's really unfortunate that the county has not been able to create additional ordinance of their own to do something about that. There have been multiple calls to the county and to animal services about the treatment of horses down there, and that improved for a while, but that all floods down there. I agree, that's... That's an eyesore. We're not... I don't think these folks are proposing that people do that in their backyard, but...
I just had one...
Go ahead.
Yeah. I just had one more thing to say about down there. I'm not sure in that river, if it's the core engineers that run that, but that particular property, they dig wherever they want and just let the river come in. You know? They got backhoes out there, and they dig little lakes for themselves, so the river runs in there. And that's another problem.
Yes, Alderman Freeman?
Getting back to chickens within the city limits, I don't think that if all these regulations are put into place, and people do get permits, so we know who has them, and how many, and we can regulate it that way, and they're enclosed, and there's no more than five, and we don't have roosters, they're subjected to inspections, I mean, I don't see why there would be... Anybody would have a problem with it. I don't... I mean, if all your regulations are met, Dan, like, why would you still vote no? I would like to see the setbacks from the neighbor's property farther than five feet. I think that's pretty close, but other than that, I don't have a problem with this at all.
Okay. Alderman Sanderson?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I've had the opportunity much younger to take care of chickens, and it's a lot of work. But, you know, I think people live in a country to do this stuff, and people live in a city so they can have more city living. You know, some of this... Some of this stuff here, you know, like, there... I tried to read this objectively and look at some of the answers about myths and things like that, but then you look up other things, and there's just as many things to say that those aren't myths. And, you know, as far as, you know, having... Well, when I... We had chickens, they had weasels try to break into the chicken coop and try to steal the eggs. Raccoons try to get in there. It does attract, you know, when it says you have to be responsible to be a chicken owner in this paperwork here, it says you've got to realize that that's... Some of that stuff can happen. The CDC, you know, mentions that, you know, there's... There's a lot of things. It's not like getting a cat and then cleaning your kitty litter. There's... There's different types of diseases, bird flu, salmonella, and stuff like that. If things are improperly handled, that could possibly happen. I called the enforcement officer, and I don't see anybody from the zoning enforcement officer in this meeting, maybe they'll be at the next one, but it seems that, you know, the enforcement officer has problems when we have blight in people's backyards. They can't just go look over somebody's fence. Now, we have to have backyard chickens, and, you know, unless they have free access to be doing inspections there, I don't know if that would be that easy without trespassing on somebody's property to enforce this. I don't know if the health department's going to be involved in this, because I thought somebody called the health department, and they said that this was more of a city thing. So, you know, we got so many other things to tackle, I don't think we should bring this up. I appreciate the high school, young adults bringing this to us. I was told that they already have chickens over at Belvedere North that they're experimenting with. You know, and that's something we... We can't regulate, because they're not in the city. I kind of wish we didn't... Hadn't run sewer and water, there would not have been part of the city, so at least we're informed about that. But, you know, I think this is something that was just going to give us more stuff, and we have other thing, growth in the city, other things that we need to take care of. It's hard to enforce. We're just trying to do this enforcement thing that the mayor brought forth with Rockford and that consortium, and I think we should just try to clean up our city, what we have now, and not add on to this. So, I disagree. Everybody's entitled to their opinions, but I disagree. I probably would vote no, from what I've looked.
Well, to clarify, the land bank has nothing to do with enforcing chicken coops. Secondly, we do have a predator situation in the city. I don't know about y'all's neighborhood, in my neighborhood, I see fox, coons, an eagle, vultures. I mean, it's part of the topography. We're surrounded by countryside. So, you know, we... I hadn't thought about coyotes. I... Everybody's got dogs. Coyotes sort of stay away from dogs whenever they are in presence. In my neighborhood, they have a rough deal, because everybody's got one or two dogs in the neighborhood, big dogs. So, you know, I think they're all valid concerns. Again, these are things that had... They had these in their hands to rebut or to address would be helpful. We're not going to vote on this tonight. It's going to come back for a final vote at city council. So, I would say to all of you, and I, again, I commend you for bringing this forward this way, and coming here and presenting this to the city council. I think that's admirable. I'm thrilled when young people do that. I would say, prepare yourself to answer the questions you hear come up here tonight, and the final vote will be at the next city council meeting. Having said that, Alderman Snow?
So, Gina, maybe you can enlighten me again. So, it talks about the outdoor shelter and an enclosure, and it being a hundred and twenty square feet, which is ten feet by twelve feet. Not a large shed, but a fairly reasonable backyard shed. That's where the chickens can be, and their enclosure that they roost in at night is in that structure as well. Is that correct? Or is that a secondary attachment?
So, the coop itself, which is where they nest at night and seek shelter during inclement weather, and most likely lay their eggs, is... Can... Is limited to a hundred and twenty square feet. We chose that size, because that's the cutoff for building permit requirements, and most of the coops and sheds you can go to the store and get are a hundred and twenty square feet, because companies know that's the standard building permit cutoff, so they... They sell the pre-built stuff at that size. And then, so that's the coop. Then there's the outdoor enclosure that's attached to the coop. That is going to be fenced on the sides and on the top, because you will, you know, get vultures and hawks. My sister, that lives in Joliet, had chickens that were attacked from up above, so the enclosure, that's why it requires top and sides enclosure. It also prevents any of the feistier chickens from being able to fly out, because it fits enclosed on the top and the sides. So, their outside area, where they can graze, eat insects, exercise, people can watch them and enjoy them, that's fenced outside, and then they have their actual indoor structure, which is the coop.
Total square footage?
That we did not limit the size of the outdoor enclosure. Just the setbacks of it.
What's the average lot size of a residential lot?
In the SR six district, the code requires seven thousand square feet. So, any of your newly planted lots, any of, you know, the most common lot size is about seven thousand square feet. Now, when you get to downtown, the older parts, you know, they can be smaller, but the average lot size is seven thousand square feet, with a sixty-five foot wide lot width.
Alderman Snow?
And Gina, being familiar where you generically live, the... A yard like that, people could go in five feet from the perimeter and put the whole thing up as a chicken coop. Eight foot tall? Or is it six? Six... Six foot? Or is it eight foot?
The coop is eight feet.
But what about the enclosure itself?
Typically, it's going to be about the same as the coop. And its fencing, although if it's like the size of the whole lot, then anything that's more than two panels requires a fence permit, and then you're going to fall under the fence regulations, which is six to seven feet, depending where you are. That's the same issue we have with the outdoor dog runs. If the dog run is so large that it's more than two panels in either direction, then it needs a fence permit.
Okay. Just a minute. I just wanted to tell you guys that next week, because of the holiday, our meeting will be on a Tuesday, not a Monday. So, if you come on Monday, there won't be a here, so... Seven o'clock, not six o'clock. Alderman Sanderson?
Yes, thanks. So, you know, we have regulations on sheds. I think we only can have two sheds, or is it one?
You can have one detached shed. One accessory structure.
All right. There's certain size limits to that. Now, it's... Now... Now with that, people could maybe make a bigger chicken coop for, you know, larger shed. Also, people would maybe have a tendency to run electricity that's running outside, rather than under regulations like they normally have in a garage or a house, where they have underground electricity that's regulated, rather than like having extension cords running out from somebody's house to, you know, have lights in there, or maybe even warm the chickens up. It just... We don't have anything in here to regulate electricity in a chicken coops, and so that's another concern of mine, and I'm bringing that up so that they can know about that. I have concern that they don't run electricity for it. So, enforcement, maybe there should... I don't remember. What's... What's the cost to have a permit to do this? What kind of enforcement?
Well, these wouldn't require a building permit. That's one of the suggestions that Alderman Snow has, is that a building permit would be required. I'm not in the building department. I don't issue building permits, but I believe they base theirs on instruction.
Because I saw that some of the other cities had, you know, more money than normal to enforce that, so, you know, someone helped pay for the enforcement of chicken coops and stuff like that. So, that's something that, you know, I may not still be in favor of, but I think that we should amend it to at least protect, if it does pass by a majority of the council, to have some of that stuff added in there. So, that's what I worry about.
Esteemed attorney?
That was the purpose for tonight's meeting, was to receive your requested amendments, because what is sitting at second reading next Tuesday night is the ordinance as introduced. Unless amendments are made at that time, they would not be part of that ordinance.
Alderman Snow?
And to your que... To your comment, so, this was up for discussion. Does that include making those and moving them forward, where we make those motions here to amend the current ordinance as it sits, or we need to discuss it now and know what we're going to do next Tuesday?
The latter. You discuss it now, decide what you want to do, so we can prepare the draft and things like that, but the actual motion to amend would occur next Tuesday night.
Something I might throw out here while we're talking about this, and I'm just throwing this out as an idea. If we make... Bring... Prepared to make those amendments before we vote on it, I think then everybody will know what it's really going to be next week, before, you know, make those amendments to the ordinance before we vote on it, not after the fact. Doesn't do any good then. So, what about the idea of running a pilot program and limit the number of coops initially, on a first-come, first-served basis, and look at it again after a year, and see if we've had egregious issues, if there have been predator reports, if they've been neighbor complaints, et cetera, et cetera? That way, we'd get a better feel for, is this something... I personally, and I have mixed feelings about it, but I personally don't want to increase problems with the kind of properties that we have problems with already, but I don't see that, and I don't see everybody wanting a chicken coop. You know, I don't think we're going to have a thousand permits for a chicken coop, ever. I think that this is a upscale, if you permit me, hobby for city dwellers that want to get into this and eat fresh eggs and do something, and it's a teaching experience for the children, and that's the way all the reading that I've done has looked at it, is it's all of those things. It's, you know, getting back to nature, getting back to farming a little bit, the organic nature of feeding your family better, all of those kinds of things. And I think that's why this is maybe coming forward today. A lot of cities and communities are looking at this, so... Just some thoughts for you. Alderman Brooks? And then Alderman Snow?
Yes, Mary. You stole my thunder there.
I'm sorry. Here.
I was going to suggest exactly what you bought forth, and I think that's a tremendous idea, maybe restricting it to five or ten coops, going forward there for a year's time. Look at it, see how things go.
Five or ten would be too small of a sample. I think twenty-five, maybe, something like that.
I don't think you'll find twenty-five.
Well, we'll see.
The only issue I see with...
Anyway. I didn't... I want to compare this to the legalized gambling in town, how we restricted that, I think to thirty establishments now. Initially, everybody thought this was going to be terrible, going to have bar fights and stick-ups and all kinds of police calls, and I don't think, Chief, that we'd probably get one a week or one a month in a call into those establishments. So, to think that we're going to get a bunch of chicken calls now, because of a few chicken coops in town, I think we're probably overstretching again and getting too excited over a small problem.
Well, it brings to mind when we decided to allow pot-bellied pigs. I don't see the... I don't see the community overrun with pot-bellied pigs. And as far as I know, they're they haven't caused a real problem. But there are, how many we have? So, you know, it's people that sounds and you remember at that time, there was a lady who wanted to move her parents here. And they were very ill and they wanted to bring their pig and, you know, so that's never really caused a problem. Alderman Snow.
So again, I appreciate the the students bringing this forward. But again, um, in the world of regulating this, um, my intention, if it moves forward, is to have a permit for the chickens. And I think it should be yearly. Then if there is a structure, which there has to be in order to house the chickens, they need to pull a permit. Alderman Sanders does bring up an interesting point. Currently, right now, if I recall right, Gina, somebody can build, um, you can have your outdoor shed. And then you can build a um, kid's fort play area. And I'm sure that's I'm sure that's probably been abused where, hey, I got a ten by ten shed for the kids to play in. They're not using it anymore. They've outgrown it. There's my rest of my storage. I can see his point. Again, you have another shed activity. Yep, now now all the excess stuff um, goes in there and they accumulate more stuff. Now let me get it out of the front yards. But that again, it can it's subject to abuse. If you do the yearly permit, then you know that if they don't come pull the permit, they got no chickens. They got no chickens, out goes the shed, out goes the enclosure. If the enclosure is not being used, it needs to be taken down. I I think this is going to be an unsightly mess personally. Again, I don't think it belongs in town. Alderman Sanders brings up an interesting point about the electricity. Again, they need to probably provide something for the chickens in that regard, whether it's a light and or heat and flawed water. That's going to require electricity. That needs a permit, I would think. So, um, again, a lot of things that I think need to be regulated. But I think the enforcement of it, I think, just sets everybody up for failure, including us. I personally had two complaints from two different ends of the street and where I lived that people called me up and said, hey, clown down the street's got chickens, not allowed. Well, they called for a reason. We are complaint driven. If you don't complain, nobody says anything. So generally speaking, you know, I've gotten complaints about the people who tried to have the chickens.
Alderman Crawford.
Yeah, Mayor, um, can I make a motion right now to try a pilot program?
We're not, we're not, we're not voting on this tonight. So those will all be amendments that can be made to the ordinance next week.
That being said, I'd like to know what amendments you want made so we can walk in prepared. I would not. If you're going to do some kind of a pilot program, you've got to do it by permit basis, which means you're permitting the the keeping of chickens. I don't know if I go with the building permit route for the coops themselves because we've adopted the International Building Code. That specifically says that anything under one hundred and twenty square feet does not require a permit. Well, no, 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 any structure. It's a zoning code that says one structure. So. We could. But the point I'm making is I don't know if I get into the whole rigmarole of permitting the actual coop. If you want to have permits so they can keep the chickens, that's a different story. That will require some significant redrafting on the ordinance. But that's the only way you can do a pilot program too.
Ms. Freeman.
I know exactly where you're talking about, Dan. It was on the corner of Strawberry Lane there in Harrison. A, those people had way more than five chickens. B, they had a rooster. C, they were keeping them in their garage and they got out all the time. So there's your complaints. That's not what this is going to be all about. As far as running electricity through extension cords to sheds, anybody can put up a shed in their yard and run an extension cord to it now. How do you know if they have their electric underground or they got an extension cord there? As far as chickens don't belong anywhere but in this county, I disagree. That's like saying big dogs don't belong in apartments. Which it happens to be my personal feeling, but people have big dogs in apartments and pig big dogs in small yards and big dogs in town. I I I just, um, I personally think that many, many, many children that live in the city don't have access to farms. I don't think they do field trips to farms anymore. My granddaughter, for one, would love to have a friend that had a couple chickens in their backyard to go play with and learn about and watch grow.
Alderman Sanderson.
Thank you. So I guess I guess this is a little bit of a two-sided thing. I got more questions. Okay, we've mentioned pot-bellied pigs. That was a point. Well, also though, if to re to restrict, if we decided that we had too many complaints with chickens and everybody spent a lot of money on their structures, then we're turning around and making somebody tear out expensive structures that we've already allowed. Are people going to sell eggs? Are we going to regulate that with our business permits? How do we know if they're selling eggs? So and also.
The egg police.
Huh?
The egg police.
Yeah, well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I isn't that a valid point, Your Honor? You know, I mean, you're you're making a a snide comment about that.
Well, I'm making a comment that, once again, we're envisioning building an ordinance that is so complicated that'll guarantee nobody's going to do it. And the the whole point of this is if if you have looked into backyard chicken coops, they come in kits. They range from a few hundred dollars to a few thousand dollars. Anybody that wants to run warming lamps and the higher end kind of lighting will be required to run underground conduit for their electric, just like you do when you run it out to your pool. That's already in our code. We don't allow certain to run stuff off of uh, electric cords when it passes a certain amount of of lighting and so forth. So the idea is simply this. These are things that have been tested and tried in other communities like ours. And they have, the the general opinion is it has a very positive educational effect for the kids in the neighborhood. The other thing is this costs some money to get involved with. This is just not a, you know, I got ten bucks, I'm going to do chickens. So I I think that the people that are going to do this are serious hobbyists that want to do the things that we pointed out. I don't think we're going to have a rampant bunch of people going and buying a lot of chickens, particularly if they know on the front end, things like these are for, these are to raise chickens for home use, not for resale to the public or anybody else. Now, if they want to give, you know, eggs to their neighbors or something like that, we can't regulate that anyway. I happen to know there are certain people that we have working in our organizations in the city that have chickens at their places. And they have sold eggs to folks that work in our our businesses and our city. And you know, I just, I I cringe when we try to over legislate every single thing. If you don't like it, vote no. If you like it, vote yes. Set some parameters, run a test, give these kids the benefit of the doubt to see if this might be something that has a positive effect in the community. And and it really is a yes or no answer. If you want to restrict it and and add some other things, let's make it something reasonable. Add that to the ordinance. If you give us a little notice so we can explore those kinds of things. We've been taking notes on what has been said here this evening. And when it comes back, I said, it's a simple vote. If you if you if you think it's something that might have a positive effect, vote yes. If you think it's going to be a menace and attract all kinds of bad people and bad chickens and and bad animals, then vote no. I mean, it's that simple.
I I thought this was, the reason is here is though, so we could voice our opinions and have a discussion on this, not just get shut down and say that we shouldn't be discussing this. This is something that we can share with everybody else. Also, I wanted to say that another concern of mine was, um, you know, I've read that, you know, chickens, when they lay eggs, you know, they say the hens don't make noise. But sometimes when they lay an egg, they all coo and they start making noise and they all start clucking at the same time. So they make more noise than than you know about. Also, uh, when they only lay eggs mostly until they're two years old, according to what I read from the CDC. And they live to eight, 10 years old. So the people got to know that they might not always have eggs. As far as having organic chickens and it's a small enclosure, they're not going to be really free-range chickens because they're not walking around a place. I guess you can feed them organic food and that would work. But it's, uh, I, you know, just there's just a lot of problems that I think we need to discuss before we vote yes or no on this.
Alderman Porter.
Well, I was just going to suggest two changes here that I'd like to see if. One is, uh, I noticed the other communities, they say no roosters at all. They don't have that six-month thing in there. So I'd like to see that happen, that that there are no roosters allowed, period. And also, uh, I'd like to see it limited to three chickens.
Okay. Tom, Alderman.
Yeah, I think the permit's a good idea, like Marsha was saying with her stuff is good. Some regulation as far as they at least sign up for it, maybe have a a outline of the plot of where they're going to put the shelter on their property and how big it is and the enclosure and so forth. As far as a rooster, you can't really tell it's a rooster until six months. So you have to do that. And I think, yeah, five is fine. I don't, I think five hens are fine. But and then maybe the setback from the property line instead of five feet, maybe go 10 feet. Make it a little bit further from the property line. But and the one town has them, they have to, and the permit, they have to tell their neighbors are going to do this and get permission from the neighbors. I don't know if that'd be something, but.
Yeah, Alderman Brooks.
Certainly, all these birds would be banded, would they not? In case they got out, uh, we'd know where to return them to, um, it'd be registered.
I guess that would be up to the owners. And I don't know, I don't think they microchip chickens, but maybe a band with the address on it. I I like that idea, just let your neighbors know. Your neighbors, your five closest neighbors, what do you think about it? Are you okay with it? You're not okay with it? Yeah, before you apply and and give us your site plan and, you know, all of those kinds of things. I think we can regulate it sensibly and and give it an opportunity to see if it's a good thing or a bad thing. Yes, Gina.
I just had some comments to address some of the items that Alderman Sanderson brought up. As far as selling eggs, the sale of eggs off premises is actually extremely regulated. They have to be stamped, they have to be in a carton, they have to be recorded. That's why most people have the farm stands so that they're not leaving the property before they're sold. But it would be, you know, if you have three or five chickens, then you're only getting three to five eggs a day. That's if they're laying every day. So you're not going to have large quantities of eggs. It'd probably be equal to those that garden, that make zucchini bread or homemade jelly and sell it to a couple of friends here and there. Just because of the amount of eggs that they're going to be generating, it's it's not going to be a large, um, a large amount. And, um, as far as when the hens stop laying eggs, um, there's a couple of options. The property manager for Pearl Place Apartments was excited about the option of having a chicken coop because not so much for the eggs, but as an enrichment activity for the residents. They can go out there, they can feed the chickens, they can talk to the chickens, watch the chickens. It's just something for those residents to do. And then if your chickens not laying eggs anymore and don't want it, there are a couple of places that will help you rehome them. There's also a local zoo that will use it for food. Which is, it's the circle of life, it is what it is. But they have already said that they will, they would gladly take chickens that are no longer. You know, they're, they have hyenas and other animals that are predators that they will. So the girls did look into, uh, what to do if you no longer, either you realize chicken raising isn't your thing or they're no longer laying. And a lot of times the coops and the enclosures are on wheels so that you can wheel them around. Because chickens, they eat insects, they peck at the dirt. And you don't want to get those bare patches. So a lot of times they're on wheels so that you can move the coop around your yard so that you don't get the bare patch and that the insects, you know, are there for the chickens. You can still feed them table scraps, garbage. I mean, chickens are, they will pretty much eat anything. So you can feed them stuff, you can buy seed, or you can let them feed off the insects in the backyard. So there's just a vi- wide variety. But you are right, they will stop laying at some point. But there are options for that.
It says in the regulation. Outside, but you can't bring a live chicken inside. So what do you have to do, break their neck? I mean, what is considered slaughter? Is that, is that with a axe or is that?
So that, no, that's a very good question. That, um, that regulation came about because we've actually had complaints in the past from people that were supposedly slaughtering pigs in their garage. And there was, um, not to be graphic, but basically like a bloodstream going down the driveway. So we do know slaughtering goes on in town. We didn't want it to be outside where people heard it or saw it. Because let's face it, if you don't want to see that, you really don't want to see that. But we didn't want to say no slaughtering at all because I know quite a few people that hunt turkey, that hunt deer, that hunt pheasant, that, you know, hunt, they just hunt and they process it in their garage. Either you bring it to a processor or a lot of people process them in their garage. So we know there's already slaughtering going on from the hunters. So if you have your own chicken, how can you say you can't slaughter your chicken? But if you go and shoot a deer and bring it home, go ahead. So that's where we just said no outside, like keep it inside or you can't see it, you know, keep it clean.
Alderman Snow.
And Gina brought up an interesting point, the Pearl Place. Okay, so this is per resident? Or is it per plotted property with a residence?
Per property that has a residence on it. So if you own residentially owned property, but there's no house there, no chicken coop. It has to go along with a residential structure. And that way, they're monitored a lot better. You're not having someone setting up coops in a half-built subdivision and not monitoring it.
So Pearl Place couldn't have a coop?
Pearl Place could have one coop.
One coop because that's considered.
Because it's one pearl lot that has a structure on it.
So then also, again, you do have residents that have the vacant lot that's adjacent to them. They can't run it into that because it needs to be on that plat version, not.
Correct.
Extension into the extra area.
Correct, just like if they own the vacant lot next to them and they want to put their garage on that lot, they cannot because you cannot have an accessory structure without a primary structure on the same lot.
And again, I think with the advent of having a permit that forces the people to be able to come in, find out all these regulations, you can see their plat, you can tell them you can go here to here and regulate it. There should be a, obviously, um, with that permit, I don't know what the standard permit would be, but we can put a fee associated with that to ten-dollar fee, whatever, to account for the time that's being spent for somebody to to get all that. And bring up interesting points like the fence, um, that you can't coop the whole yard. You've got to be within a certain parameter, otherwise you got to pull a permit. And they could pull a permit and fence the whole area in, correct?
They could fence the whole area if they want to. But keep in mind, if the chickens are outside, they also need the enclosure on the top. So it's not an open-air enclosure. And I don't think someone's going to want to, I mean, you're talking about a lot of chain link fencing than if you're enclosing the entire top of your yard. And if you have kids, I mean, you're not going to be able to do anything in your backyard if you have a fence canopy throughout the whole thing. So I think it would self-regulate itself to not be the whole yard.
There would be a cost to creating the home chicken handbook. And that cost can be built into the permit fee for doing that to cover the cost of of producing that. And they would, if they're issued a permit, they get handled handed the handbook also that has all the rules and regulations, who to contact, all of all of the above.
Yep, and the girls did say that they would be willing to make informational handouts and stuff like that to give to residents.
Alderman Snow.
So would it be appropriate to ask the mayor to do a straw poll as to who in this council for the purpose of amending next week would be favorable to a chicken permit? And again, do we want to put a time limit that it's good for a year so that people renew it? Otherwise, you're going to wind up with people who get rid of the chickens. You wind up with the extra crap in the backyard, the extra shed.
Well, since you, the attorney is the one that's posing the question, I'll let him do the straw poll. What do you, what do you want? What do you, what do you want, what do you wanna find out from them?
I don't know. Well, I, I think the question from Alderman Snow is not necessarily what you were thinking of. From what I see here, there's been a lot of ideas thrown out. The ones that seem to have the most traction is a permitting structure for having the, uh, the coops in the first place, or the chickens in the first place, I was just gonna say. Um, probably a company with some kind of diagram as to where it would be on the property. That seems to be the biggest thought process coming from the committee so far this evening. There were some minor, uh, discussions about no roosters, which is already built into the ordinance because of the sexting issue. You can't tell if it's a rooster for six months, but I, Gina could talk more to whether or not we just make it no roosters and then when they find out, they gotta get rid of it, so to speak. Um, there was some talk about notice adjoining property owners. I can think of a few issues legally with giving an adjoining property owner the ability unilaterally prevent their neighbor from doing something that's otherwise legal. Um, there's no reason why you can't give them notice and we do that for zoning now. But even the zoning context and adjoining landlord can't unilaterally deny the use of that property. They can simply come in and speak against it at a public hearing. And if there's enough of them, they can force a supermajority to vote the city council, but that's in the zoning context. You're talking about, you know, changes and using the whole bit. So, I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate. Obviously, notice the joint property owners makes sense. Um, but to give them a unilateral right to say no, I think is difficult. Um, the mayor spoke for the first time I've heard tonight about a possible fee. I don't know what that fee would be and I don't know necessarily if fee is, is needed um, because I don't know if there's any cost with a pilot program. Remember, your fees should be geared to address what the cost would be for, for handling the, the, the program as opposed to, uh, revenue generators. So, I guess the first question I have is, are we really just talking about requiring permits and limiting the number of permits for, for the beginning? Is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about all this other stuff too? Because with permits, I think Gina and I could either tie that into the concept of private residential kennel or, or just do a complete independent of that. Private residential kennel might be difficult because that pertains only to dogs and has all kinds of weird regulations with it, but, um, that can be done and we could limit the number, I suppose, on a first come, first served basis in the first year to see how it works. Um, but again, then these people be going out, buying the kennels and setting it all up. But at the outset, they would know that it might not be there in a year and we have to make them aware of that. So, if that's what the committee wishes, if it's just the permits, an easy show of hands to know whether that's the move, direction we should go for purposes of next week.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. Okay, Alderman Stevens, haven't heard from him for a while, so go ahead.
Just saying yeah for the poll.
Okay, Alderman Snow.
So, again, I was just throwing out a ten dollar fee to, A, it would help cover the cost of any publication and to help, um, offset any extra time that staff would have, um, that they might be otherwise be using to get some other stuff done. So, it was a not minimal fee, but, um, something that at least, um, would cover some, any of the costs. Not a revenue generator, not looking to generate revenue.
I'm not, I'm not, uh, Ms. Morlock, I don't wanna speak to what the impact of the permitting structure would be upon her department, but if you're only allowed twenty-five in the first place anyway, I can't see where it'd be that much. I mean, it's just, I want chickens, here's my address and here's my site plan. I don't know where it'd be that much work, but I'd let her speak to that.
Alderman Frank?
I like the idea that you said, Mayor, um, to cap it. I don't want everybody to be able to have it. So, if we cap it, I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm for capping the test program to see how it goes and then basically extrapolate that to see how many complaints we get, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, Alderman Frank. Yes, Alderman Porter.
Yeah, on that note, I was gonna ask, if we do do a pilot program, and it turns out there are a lot of problems, which I don't know if there will be or not, but, uh, how hard is it to repeal the ordinance? Uh, you know, and, and undo what we did if, if we find out that there are too many problems?
You bring it up at a meeting, make a motion, you get a second?
Well, oh, I have a question for Drello then. Would it, if there's a permit, since the permit's only good for one year, it won't fall into like illegal non-conforming status? If it gets removed from the code, done?
It's not zoning, right?
What?
We'll keep it out of the zoning code. Why would this be zoning?
This is a text moment to the zoning code.
I know, but the permitting structure leaves outside the zoning code. We'll, we'll keep that out of the zoning code, we'll put it someplace else.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure, cause usually, if something's allowed, you start it legally and then the code changes, you can continue that use cause it's legal, non-conforming. I just wanna make sure that this wouldn't fall into that.
That, that could create a problem.
Okay, we exhausted the subject for this evening.
I mean, honestly, the, the simple answer is yay or nay, but we can draft the permit structure and see what can't be done for next week.
Well, let me explain the permit structure. We have a revenue issue and we tried to amend that to just cover the costs of doing business as the city goes forward. And so, from that aspect, we need to cover our cost that's involved with us enabling our citizens to do this, just like we do when they build a house or, you know, whatever and inspection, you know, that's to cover the inspections when we go inspect it. So, a nominal fee to cover the cost of the handbook and the time staff has to put into creating that handbook. And let's see how it goes. I mean, if we end up with complaints all the time, we'll know pretty quick that we have complaints all the time. And I think it needs to be a manageable number for the, the pilot program so that Kara can cover that because, I mean, she has a list with, with two hundred complaints on it going all the time. You know, so, you know, it is complaint-driven. I think letting the neighbors know you're gonna do it is enough. I don't think you've gotta get them to sign a paper saying it's okay. If all your neighbors are gonna hate you for putting chickens, chances are you're not gonna put chickens in the backyard. I mean, there's that. Alderman Brooks, did you have a final comment?
No, I'm through, Mayor.
Alderman Sanderson?
Just a quick one, uh, just a little clarification on the, um, if it's not a zoning issue, then can the zoning enforcement officer still enforce it?
We don't have a specific zoning enforcement officer. She's our code enforcement officer. Our, our department enforces every single code in the city bill there except for criminal codes and traffic codes.
Alderman Snow?
Do we wanna do a straw poll as far as, uh, the, oh crap, um...
The outcome? Okay, we can, everybody raise your hand for a snow.
It had to do with, um, actually having the permit, having it good for a year, um, and I'd be darned if I lost it, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, notifying the neighbors. Do we wanna get a straw poll on notifying the neighbor into the regulation? That's what it was.
I don't know that we should regulate that. I think it's common sense that you go to your neighbors and say, I'm looking at doing this. How do you feel about it? You know, what does everybody think? You know, you know your neighbors.
It's like my neighbor, they put a coop in two years ago. I didn't find out until you're, about, I don't know, six months ago that they had one.
And they didn't invite you for dinner, right?
Didn't give me any eggs either.
Okay, are, are we, we ready to move along with the rest of the agenda? Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, you young ladies know what you got cut out for you. If you have specific questions or there are certain other comments that the alderman made, if you wanna call, contact the alderman directly, I'm sure they wouldn't mind talking to you on a, on a one-on-one basis, so have at it. And I think we all agree, we all admire you for bringing this forward and making government work the way it's supposed to work, where we listen to what people have to say. Thank you very much. Okay, under number two, building, planning and zoning new business, we have none this evening. Under number three, public works unfinished business, we have none this evening. Which brings us to public works new business and the first item up is, um, Jerry Rao parking lot. You might remember that several months ago, I had mentioned to you, uh, in conjunction when we first started talking about the parking lot that, uh, uh, we wanted to sell possibly to Coach's Corner, that I had, we had been approached. Uh, Jerry Rao, that owns this two-point-two acre parking lot that runs from Lincoln Avenue down to the river. Uh, pavement's in reasonable shape. We looked at it, we had it appraised. Jerry is unable to be with us. His health has been very dicey the last couple of months. Um, he would've been here tonight had he been able to come. He's been in the hospital and so forth. So, you've had an opportunity to look at the appraisal. The appraisal came out at eighty-eight thousand dollars. We have had a, a negotiation with Jerry and he would be willing to take seventy-five thousand dollars for this property. And he also would be willing, i- if it would benefit the city and help us make the decision that we wanted to purchase it, to spread that out over three years, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Some of the thinking and looking at this particular piece of property is that we, we have no city parking up at that end of town. And every time that there's an event at the Apollo Theater or at Heritage Days or something like that, Jerry has been nice enough to allow parking there. Um, in, in the effort to hope that we grow our retail and small business community downtown, having that parking a- a- available as a city lot maintained by the city, of course, um, would be something that I think might be good for the future for us. And it's almost like we, we swapped, you know, we got sixty thousand for the parking lot here and we're getting a, a bigger parking lot for a little bit more. So, um, just wanted to give you a, a heads up on this and get some, some feedback from you of what you think about it. Alderman Stevens and Alderman Brooks.
Um, in the morning, I talked to a bunch of older gentlemen and they told me that that whole lot back there from the early sixties clear back was an auto salvage yard. So, I can only imagine what kinda chemicals are buried underneath of the, the parking lot there from salvage of autos from sixties back to, cause I don't see anything in here where the EPA has done, you know, the studies have been done to dig down into the ground to find out if there's anything there or not.
Well, actually, it has been done and, and Mr. Rao has that information. Uh, they have a letter of no more re- remediation. Brent, you know a little bit of something about that, don't you?
Um, the paperwork he indicated, right, there's no further remediation needed, um, as long as the caps and things stay in place. Uh, the sketch that was handed out on your desk tonight, the one that's got the colorized version, is just a quick, little sketch I put together of what, uh, parking areas would look like. Um, and that basically incorporates all the existing blacktop, um, that's out there now. So, if the contemplation is, uh, for the parking, uh, basically if you end up doing an overlay or maintenance work, you don't do any excavation, uh, the bottom line is for EPA is the cap that's in place needs to stay in place. If you do bother, if you do have to dig it up for any reason, if you, as long as you replace it and have that cap there, then the NFR still stands for the property, which is no further remediation. So, in other words, a, a blacktop cap is acceptable. It's the same thing we're going after on our brownfields redevelopment grant that's been frozen by the state, uh, down on the, on the, um, sewing, the old sewing machine company property, uh, where we took that building down, but we left the concrete foundation for that same very reason because that counts as a cap. And then when, and if those funds are ever freed up, we'll be able to finish the rest of the cap by putting a, an underlayment down and a soil, clean soil cap on top of it and that will allow us to obtain that no further remediation, um, which is, is to that point. And then if and when development takes place, they will have to, again, deal with those same issues where they'll do their work, but then they have to have a cap on the, on the final product when they're done to maintain that NFR rating, uh, letter from the EPA.
Alderman Brooks, did you have a comment?
No, I took care of it.
Okay, Alderman Freeman?
So, uh, we sold the other one for sixty thousand and this is seventy-five, so we basically are, we got rid of one we don't really need to get one we do for fifteen thousand. Does this need to be overlaid and is there lighting there already? Or are we gonna have to put lighting in and overlay it? And how much is all that gonna cost on top of the fifteen thousand?
I don't have that information now. I put that together, um, if the council decides they wish to proceed with it. Um, the existing surface that's there now, it's aged, um, it's, it's probably commiserate with, uh, the Manley's property when we took that over, uh, where we made some improvements in some sections and other sections we didn't have to. Uh, you're probably looking at the same thing here where initially we could stripe it, you could utilize it. And then over time, through the budgeting process, you could budget for those improvements. Uh, but my guess would be, yes, there would be some lighting that would probably need to be done initially. And again, if the council, if the council wants to, uh, proceed, uh, with this, then we would, I put those in numbers together and get that to you.
There is lighting currently, but it needs to be upgraded, so, to LED like we're, we're using now from a cost basis. Okay, um, I think we had Alderman Sanderson.
Well, I was gonna ask about the cost of, cause I drove by there and it looked like it needed some work, so I wanted to know about the cost.
Yeah, and, and I would, we'll definitely put that information together for you guys. Cause, you know, we gave, we gave, uh, we gave a pretty nice lot over for sixty thousand and we're getting one that we gotta fix up a little bit there. It's bigger though.
Alderman Borowitz?
Uh, ComEd's program, yes, it's, um, it's not as good as what it used to be, but it's still there. Um, so, we've taken advantage of that and all the LED lighting work that we've done so far to date. I can also tell you that I received the, uh, uh, work order, uh, from ComEd where they are going to be switching out all the remainder of our non-LED lights, two LED lights that are on their facilities, on their poles. That's gonna start second quarter of, uh, this year. To do that and the projected savings to us on a, from a just electrical use basis, uh, going forward will probably be between forty and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Alderman Snow?
I don't, I think this is a good investment, um, for the dollars especially. Um, one thing I would comment though, that with parking lot number seven there, that if I were, if I were somebody going to the Apollo and I see the municipal parking lot, I'm not gonna drive around trying to look for parking over on Lincoln and realize that the entrance, um, goes in on Lincoln. I would think we'd have an in-in-out on Lincoln, but also something through the parking lot seven to access that. Just tossing that out there.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see on the sketch, but that's what it contemplates is the entrance for lot seven will take you right into that. And that's kinda why I wanted to do this sketch to show you how the existing park and the existing alley, in your, in your color there, the yellow, the highlighted yellow area is, uh, public alley already, public right-of-way there. Uh, and there'll be access there, point as well into that parking area. So, there'll be numerous points of access to get in there.
Fire department had kind of a busy day today, uh, backing up District Two with the fire out in Nustro Park. Um, but, uh, the chief, uh, is also kinda happy that this will also give them another access to the river to launch their rescue craft and their boat and their ski-doo and, you know, and all, and Attorney Drello wants to tie his boat up there so he can go fishing, uh, so. Who else would like to comment at this time? Alderman Sanderson?
I just forgot to ask and, and Sean, I can't remember, uh, what we charge tenants, but I know that there's some tenants there and sometimes some of our parking lots start getting a little filled up with tenants. So, I was, I was wondering if, what was the, I wonder how many tenants might be parking there. Brent, figure that out and...
I can't remember how much we charge. Don't we charge something?
We no longer charge. That was taken away a long time ago.
Oh, so, you know, so it's like we're sometimes taking care of some of the landlords down there. I mean, they, I know they need a place to stay, but it's also taxpayer dollars. We need to look at that.
Right, and that'll be one of the discussions you'll need to have is, well, we've done away with those permits, but yet we have one twenty-four hour lot left. We have, uh, six hour or, or two hour parking mostly. We do have some twelve hour available as well, so that's something that the council will have to decide on at some point as well.
We'll need to look at that whole parking ordinance structure that we have if we do this and, and, and maybe update it, upgrade it. Alderman Snow?
And would the, uh, would we have the riverfront area also accessible to residents? Or is that, the mere fact that the city owns it kinda vaguely becomes a park?
I think that remains to be, first of all, public safety is the important issue. I, I don't know if we might at some point have a, talk about having a... I don't know if we might at some point have a, talk about having a jetty or a fishing pier there that the city furnishes for the residents. I mean, those are all things we contemplated with the development of the Leith property was to have some fishing piers onto the river there that were accessible to the folks that live in town. So certainly an item for discussion, good point. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Alderman Frank.
My question is to you or to Brent, whoever can answer it. Is there really a need for this parking lot other than the Apollo when they have the concerts?
There are a number of properties at that end of town that are starting to develop or that we hope will develop into more, the types of businesses that draw more people in, i.e. restaurants, brew pub, that sort of thing. And yes, we can use more parking there. If we ever have busy downtown, the parking on State Street fills up very, very quickly. The idea is we will examine what the best use of that lot is and if indeed, you know, we, we get a certain amount of, we have an arrangement with the community building on the parking lot there. And so we would have to have an arrangement with the Apollo on the parking lot there. And if she wanted to use that for events, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have a reasonable discussion if she wanted to use it just for her events on a specific night that she might be able to pay a fee and be able to do that and furnish the people for the in and out. Those are all things. But yes, we need parking up at that end of town. There's that, you know, lot seven is about, what, 12 cars maybe? And most of those spaces are used by the businesses that are right there. Alderman Snow.
And the only negative thing I, I see besides, you know, the outlay of $75,000 would be the fact that he's had this for sale for a long time, it seems like. And I was kind of always surprised that somebody else didn't try to take advantage of the riverfront and do something with it. But I guess if it's got an EPA issue, that would...
Well, I'd be happy to explain that to you. He came to us two and a half years ago and said he, if we wanted it, he would hold on to it for us because he wanted to do that for the city. And if anybody knows Jerry Rao and his wife, they have done a ton of things for the city. And he thought if it would benefit the city, he would be willing to hold on to it. He is selling the, what used to be Burton Motors Building to the young man who has the speed shop, you know, tires and accoutrement, auto accoutrements currently. And so he has been as good as his word. He has waited until the appropriate time that we thought this would be appropriate to bring forward to the council. And that's what we did. And unfortunately, Jerry went into the hospital just before Christmas and he was unable to come tonight. So I think he was very sincere about helping us out and was willing to sell it to us for lesser price than the appraised price. Yes, Gina.
Just to go on Alderman Frank's point, I do get several phone calls with people interested in some of our downtown buildings that are vacant. And the first thing out of their mouth is, where's the nearest municipal parking lot? And I'll say, the one across the street. No, that's too small. Where's the next one at? Well, there is none north of the river. And then I don't hear back from them. So I do think having municipal parking up there, some of these longstanding vacant buildings would be a lot more desirable to people because that's the first question I get from those interested in the building is where is the parking?
Parking is a huge selling point for us. And in today's world, and for some reason in this community, people don't want to work, walk more than 10 feet to any place unless they absolutely have to. We've talked about other ways to handle the need in the future for parking as we grow. And some of the discussions have been a parking ramp. Of course, you're going to have to charge for that because there's a considerable cost for, you know, building a parking ramp and et cetera. So this seemed like a, for that end of town particularly, because there is a shortage of parking, municipal parking. We thought this was, was a good idea. So someone give me a motion to move this forward?
I'd make that motion.
Second, Alderman Crawford. Second, Alderman Brooks. All those in favor will, oh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Eight in favor.
The motion has passed and we'll come back to City Council for final disposition. Thank you. Next up, we have the wastewater treatment plant low interest loan project update and the water and sewer rate review. Director?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, first off regarding our WW, our wastewater treatment plant facilities loan assistance program project. Our facility planning report for that project has been submitted to IEP A and we've received the preliminary approval for our project. Includes the rehab of our secondary digester and improvements to the pump room in the main equipment building. The estimated cost of those improvements is $4.7 million. As far as schedule goes, the plans and specifications are scheduled to be completed in March. We're going to hopefully be bidding it in April with a contract award in July. The estimated project completion is August of 2020, so basically a year from August, this August. These projects require a dedicated source of revenue. One of the components of that revenue, we are paying off, we just finished paying off a bond issue, so some of the monies that we were using to, to pay that bond issue payment will be utilized to pay for a portion of this. The remainder needs to be made up with a rate increase on our sewer. The proposed rate increase is 12 cents per 100 cubic foot. It'll raise our sewer use fee from $2.46 currently to $2.58. It's a 4.8% increase for the typical residential family using 10,400 cubic feet per year. The rate increase will amount to an additional cost of $12.48. The rate increase would need to be effective on May 1 of 2019 in order to fund the first payment, which will be due the end of 2020. The final payment amount will be based on the award contract cost for this project. I would recommend approval of the 12 cents per 100 cubic foot increase in the sanitary sewer user rate required to obtain a water pollution control loan agreement for the wastewater treatment plant facilities improvement project. Just as a footnote, the last sewer rate increase we had was April 4 of 2011, and that was done for, as part of the required dedicated source of revenue for our aeration project where we utilize the same EPA low interest loan program.
Motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Alderman Crawford motions. Alderman Snow seconds. Questions, comments, further discussion? Alderman Snow.
So Brent, and maybe I'm missing it, so how long is the loan for?
It's, it's a 20 years. There was back in, this was discussed budget time last year, back in May, where we talked about the project, but yet it's a 20-year term. The interest rate at that point in time was 1.76%. It includes a principal forgiveness. We qualify for 15% principal forgiveness. So in this case, you're looking at basically a grant of a little over $700,000 with, with a final loan amount or right around the $4 million mark.
Additional questions?
And again, those numbers will all be determined once we get the bids back and what the actual contract amount will be.
Additional questions? There are none. Alderman Frank.
Forgive me because I don't understand a lot of this, but what will our payments be? And are they monthly or are they yearly?
The IEP A sets it up for the, it's two payments per year. The total amount of annual payment is going to be roughly around $240,000.
Which comes out of?
Which, again, because, and that's one reason we have to show the dedicated revenue sources, how we're going to pay the EPA back, but it'll come out of our water and sewer funds.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? There are none.
Now, I was going to say, before we vote on this, I might as well, that was the second, the second part of this, if you go to the next memo on the water rate review, just so you guys realize, my preliminary budget that I've submitted to the finance manager and the mayor shows a shortfall of $12,601. If we were to overcome that with a rate increase, which again, the last time we had a water rate increase was 2010, for every penny rate increase that we, we propose generates about $10,000 in revenue. So right now, I would be looking at, on the water side, a 2 cents per 100 cubic foot increase. I just want to make you aware of that while we're talking about on the sanitary sewer side. Two completely different issues, though.
Alderman Freeman.
Okay, yeah, Brent, that was, I was going to ask you about on the flip side of this memo. You're looking to raise the sewer part roughly $2.08 per year on residents and the water roughly $12.48 per year?
Flip-flop. The sewer rate's going to be the bigger increase. The sewer rate is predicated based on the dedicated funding source. We need to show to the EPA that our ability to repay the loan that we're requesting. And based on our financial reports, that equates to the 12 cents per 100 cubic foot. That's what that number, that's how that was arrived at. The 2 cents that I'm looking at right now on the water side is just to make a balanced budget for on the water. And again, that's got to go through the budget process, but I wanted council to be aware of that. When we're talking about sewer rate increase, I didn't want to, want you to be blindsided by when we get to the budgets talks, I'll say, whoa, we got to raise the water, too. It looks like this year, we're going to have to raise both. But the sewer by itself, if you look at my sewer budget, I got a positive $150,000 cash flow. But in order to make up my $240,000 payment, I got to have an increase to do that.
Alderman Sanderson.
Yeah, so Brent, well, how does our, I know we were right in the middle somewhere usually from the other municipalities that provide sewer and water.
We're on the low end.
We're on the...
No, we're, no, no, we're not in the middle. We're in the, we're in the bottom.
Compared, compared, okay. That's what I want to know.
We take great pride in that and I don't want to raise the rates any more than anybody else does. But like I said, we've gone seven, eight years now without rate increases. And at least on the water side, and it reflects on the sewer as well, good news, bad news. Water conservation methods have improved greatly. A lot of effort being put into that and it's working. Our water usage since two, from 2014 till now has gone down. So that's a good thing. But on the, on the flip side of that, because we're in the business to sell water, if we don't keep doing more water, then we're going to have to raise the rates to make up for it. So it's a kind of a catch 22.
Alderman Freeman.
So I had a second part to my question. Weren't we already discussing in the past and then we kind of have somewhat on the table already a rate increase to go directly for south side flooding? If we ever brought that back up to discuss for that, to go for that?
That's coming up later in night, later tonight. Item J, the stormwater utility feasibility study, where we talked about when we, back a few months when we outlined different funding options, funding sources for council to look at. And since then, we've done the sales tax and the locomotor fuel tax. One of the other funding options that we were looking at was to establish a stormwater utility where you actually establish util, a utility rate, a utility fee for stormwater being generated from, on a property. So that's coming up in further discussions.
So that would be an additional rate increase on top of this, correct?
That'll have, that'll be a completely separate issue. Water and sewer are a self-sustaining entity of their own and based on the rates that you charge.
But it will increase the residents' bills?
There will be, that will be an added utility, be an added cost to the residents if that's pursued and goes into effect. That's correct.
Any more questions or comments? There are not all those in favor. Approvals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Provenamously forward to council for final disposition. Which then brings us to the Southwest Trunk Sanitary Sewer, oh, excuse me, Southwest Trunk Sanitary Sewer Extension and Route Survey.
All right, again, memo in your packet. We currently have an agreement in place with the Rock River Water Reclamation District for treatment of wastewater from our Southwest FPA, which includes Irene Road Interchange. We have gotten several interests for property development in that area. And of course, one of the main questions is sewer and the status of that. The next step in our process for that sewer line work is to complete our preliminary engineering and surveying required to determine the final routing of the sanitary sewer mains and the location of the proposed lift station. Baxter and Woodman did the initial feasibility study, the colored map that's included with the memo. The red lines show what the proposed trunk sewer system would be to service that area. The main interest right now is what's highlighted in the black, noticed by Ipsen to Genoa, and that's to get it basically from our Newburgh Road Lift Station on the north down to the proposed lift station, which would be on the Cherry Valley slash Genoa Road area, which would be tributary then to the Rock River Water Reclamation District. We've gotten a proposal from CES, our local civil engineering firm in town, to complete that work in the cost of $35,450. I would recommend approval of the work authorization from CES to complete the preliminary engineering and the survey work required.
Motion of that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Brooks. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Snow.
So Brent, just looking, and maybe I'm misreading these lines, where the area that goes north, it looks like the, there's sewage that would go down to the lift station and then get pumped back up till, or as it were, toward the bypass?
Yes, right now, there's a lift, right now, the Appleton Lift Station, Appleton, I'm sorry, the Newburgh Lift Station pumps it all the way back to the treatment plant at Appleton and Newburgh now. So when these improvements are done, the contemplation will be everything tributary to the Newburgh Lift Station, which is basically everything north and west will all end up going to Rock River Water Reclamation District as well. And the reason for that, if you recall, based on our, our earlier studies, to do a plant expansion at our wastewater treatment plant, you're looking at probably $60 million to double the size of the plant. That can be done in two phases, $30 million each. The cost to do, put the pipe work in the lift station and to send it to Rock River is roughly between 10 and 15 million dollars. So it's, it's less than half the cost to go that route. And that prolongs the longevity of our existing plant as well.
Alderman Sanderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So is this plan also going to, for the lift stations, are they going to have a backup pump? Because that was one of the problems we had in the south side by the high school and over in White Cliff where there's some backups that failed because they didn't have their backup running or something.
Yes, this will have, this will have the backup capabilities. It will have the generator, standby generator, so it will be state of the art when it is done. But at this point in time, all this does basically is, is get that preliminary engine done, get the route, more definite route design set and the survey set so we can get the easements and go out and acquire the easements and the property needed for the lift station so that when we do get the development along the, and it's being proposed, or if it happens along the tollway, along interchange, we're in a position then to move forward with, with ultimately the sewer line that's going to serve that area.
And if we go to Rock River Reclamation in certain parts of the city, are they, we kind of held to what they decide is their, what their increases is for our citizens where it's like maybe 10, 10, 20 years down the road? They could have massive rate increases and it'd be different than the rest of the city? How does that work?
Yes, those discussions would be ongoing and work that out with them, but yes, we would contemplate the rate structure. Comparison of the rate structure, they're actually quite reasonable as well. I think we're the lowest in the area and they're probably the second or third lowest if I remember right. So their, their rates are comparable, but they are a little bit higher. But that would have to be worked out in the future. The, the nice thing about Rock River Water Reclamation and when they take on projects and they do expand, they have a much bigger footprint, much bigger area where they can spread those costs out as opposed to, to what we have.
We've been talking to them on a pretty regular basis the last year. The original agreement and conversation with them was like 35 years ago because we saw, it was seen what was happening when we, we grow.
it was seen what was happening when we grow. And the idea of having to spend, and that's at today's dollars, maybe $60 million, as opposed to $15 million. You know, if we had to spend $60 million, imagine what we'd have to do with our rates to be able to build that and to make sure that the toilet's flush and the water comes on when you, when you do all those things.
I mean, eventually, it was a smaller scale, but Village Winnebago, they recently, they finally completed the work and the extension, where now they're part of Rock River Reclamation, and their treatment plant basically was closed down. And they're now part of Rock River Water Reclamation District, and that was because their plant had gotten old and obsolete, and it was small enough, so small, and the cost to do the improvements that were being required by EPA, it wasn't economically feasible for them to be able to do that for the residents and the paying customers. So, that's the route they took. And I think over time, and it could be, could be quite a long time, but eventually, we're probably gonna be looking to be in that same boat. You know, EPA's trying to regionalize everything, develop larger, bigger footprints, and get rid of all your smaller independent plants that discharge in the Kishawaki. Rock River discharges into the Rock River, which is better because the Kishawaki is our, the only Class A stream in northern Illinois. So, the standards that were held to at our treatment plant are much more stringent because of that river classification where we discharge to, as opposed to Rock River. So, all of those things will come to play out in probably quite the long timeline. But again, that handwriting is there, and it's, it looks like it's going in that direction eventually.
Alderman Sanderson.
Thanks, Your Honor. Well, and the reason I ask those questions, 'cause I saw the suburbs, too, where they had the deep tunnel projects and people getting water from Lake Michigan, and, you know, I mean, it's substantial savings, but I just, you know, I guess I get a little scared because all of a sudden, their rates all of a sudden went crazy, and they're, and they didn't have any plants left, and they didn't have their own water dug, and, and they were subject to whatever the city of Chicago or Cook County, whoever's regulating that, did to all the suburbs. So, that, that makes me just, I like to have control over what we have, but I understand the financial end of this, and I just like to bring it up, that's all.
Right. And again, we are fortunate where we're at in our makeup and what we have with the Chrysler Corporation and Dean Foods. It's kinda like the best of both worlds, what we have as terms of water and sewer. As long as those two entities stay in business and continue, we, we've, we've got a real good situation. But if that, if something ever happens to those, we'd be looking at some substantial rate increases to be able to make up that difference.
Industry is good. With the addition of Yangfeng and Magna and those others, and those suppliers, they're kinda helping to make up for, and what Brent was referencing earlier, manufacturers inside their plants have been addressing their cost structures, and they have put new controls in place, more efficient use of their water. So, their gallonage has dropped over time. So, that's revenue to us when that, you know, that's lost when it's dropped. So, you have a twofold thing. You have the cost of building new facilities, which is astronomical and goes up every year. And then you have industrial water getting more efficient within their plants. So, you look for the best solution for everybody. And we, at this point in time, are convinced that this is the way to develop that area and do it on the less expensive route to keep our rates as low as we can possibly keep them, so.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
That sounds unanimous to me. Okay, so then, under D, we have Southwest Trunk Sanitary Sewer Revisions.
The Southeast Trunk Sanitary Sewer Revisions. All right, next on the, next memo in the packet. The original concept plan for our southeast trunk extension was completed in the early 90s, and it called for a single lift station located in the White Cliff subdivision to handle the entire service area. As you know, we've had issues there. CES is currently working on, on some updates to that lift station. And while doing that work, they've, they've looked at those long-term requirements, and if you look at the next attachment, again, the map, attached map of what that ultimate service area, basically, everything east of where Walmart is now, on that whole side of town, it would be tributary to the White Cliff Lift Station. In order to utilize that same concept that was originally done in the 90s, the wet well for that lift station would have to be over 40 feet deep, which gets into some design considerations, some construction considerations and operations, as well as the line getting to that lift station would be then over 40 feet deep in places. So, basically, they've looked at it and decided that if we put in a second lift station, as shown in the red dot, in the, in that area there, we can greatly reduce the requirements for the White Cliff Lift Station, as well as the installation of the lines, make it much easier, much more economical, and I think much more practical going forward. We've seen quite a bit of interest in the properties east of Walmart, and that's kinda what spurred this, between that combination of those inquiries and looking at what we were gonna do to get sewer there, as well as CES's current review of White Cliff is what this, brought this all about. We've got a work authorization from CES to complete the preliminary engineering for updating the southeast sanitary sewer study to basically establish a second lift station. I would recommend approval of that authorization in the amount of $22,950, and the work will be paid for from 615-820-6190. And again, this work would be then incorporated into a recapture agreement as the, as the sewer line is actually extended and the work's actually done.
Motion to approve. Alderman Brooks, second by Alderman Sanderson. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes.
So, Brent, is there a lift station in, in White Cliff right now? 'Cause I was under the impression that there was one and it got moved, which is what caused a lot of the problems that we had. So, do we have one already, and we're looking to add another one, or are we looking to add two here?
No, what we're looking to do, what you were thinking of, the lift station on that side of town to serve that area was originally located in Willow Street. It's Willow Street Lift Station. So, then, when we did the study back in the 90s, they said, well, we can serve this entire area by locating the White Cliff Lift Station. White Cliff Lift Station is in place. Right now, we're looking to update that lift station, do some improvements to it, in order to handle the flooding situations and stuff in White Cliff now. So, while CES was looking at that, they've decided that we could, by adding a second lift station further east, we could reduce the footprint, reduce the size, reduce the construction limits, I'll say, on how to build that in that, in that area, how deep and the size of that lift station, and make it much more practical, much more economical to do. And that's what we're talking about here. So, it's in, talking about one additional lift station further east than White Cliff to serve the entire basin instead of just the one.
Okay, but it's not gonna compromise the one that we've already have there, right?
No, the, the design, the trunk line and everything is already in place from the White Cliff Lift Station to the sanitary, to the gravity sewer to get to the treatment plant. That's already been sized for the entire service area, so that's not gonna change. What's gonna change is there's gonna be a force main. Instead of the force main ending at the White Cliff Lift Station like it does now, and the force main would be that dotted black line that's on the map, the force main will actually extend down to where the new red dot is for the lift station and just pump it back. And by doing that, then the force main only needs to be probably anywhere from six to 10 feet deep, as opposed to 30 or 40-plus foot deep.
So, I, I know you remember the Larson's, so this is gonna help them out?
This won't affect the Larson's. The Larson's are gonna be helped out by what the improvements we make to the current White Cliff Lift Station, which CES is working on those plans now, and they should be done shortly. So, hopefully, we'll be doing that work this summer.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, motion now on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, I believe it's unanimous. Next, we have sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project.
Pretty much wrapping up the end of our sanitary. Part of the agenda, the current budget, we have included $100,000 for rehabbing sanitary sewer lines and manholes to, in order to eliminate infiltration into our sanitary sewer system. The attached map shows a line segment of sanity, trunk sanitary sewer that has 41 manholes on it that we know for fact witnessed the amount of inflow we're getting, which needs to be grouted, sealed, or otherwise rehabbed. We've got a lump sum proposal from CES in the amount of $9,300 to complete the plan, specifications, and bidding documents for this project. I would recommend approval of their proposal, and it'll be paid for from line item 615-820-6040.
Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments, or additional? Alderman Sanderson.
So, Brent, this is gonna come out of what we've already budgeted this year. This isn't for next year?
That's correct. It's, it's currently in our, in our water sewer budget for this fiscal year. My goal would be to have that out. If it's not spent this year, it's still gonna be there. It's not really going anywhere, so we'll utilize it. My plan going forward through the budget process, and you'll see that with the budgets, is that $100,000 will be there on an annual basis out of the O&M budget for doing O&M on these lines.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item F, request for letter of credit reduction on Sager Platte Number Three.
Again, memo in your packet, Becknell Industrial has made the request for a one-time reduction in their letter of credit for Platte Three of Sager Corporate Park, based on the work completed. I would recommend that the original letter of credit in the amount of $654,567.51 be reduced to $163,642, and that reduced amount represents 25% of the original amount, which must remain in place until everything's done. If anybody's driven out there, trip road is open, most of the work's done. They have some landscape restoration work. We currently are working with ComEd to have the street lighting installed on the existing wood poles. We just got that paperwork in, so I didn't have it ready for the tonight's meeting, so you'll see that in two weeks. Committee meeting for the, for your review and approval of that. Again, Becknell will pay that initial installation cost for those, for that lighting, and the city will pick up the monthly expense of the electricity going forward, as we do with, with all new subdivisions.
Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Crawford. Alderman Freeman.
Brent, we had an issue with, they needed another parking lot, 'cause they had people parking all on the streets out there. Is there any progress on that? Is that completed?
The additional parking lot, yes, is completed, and it's, it is open. I think they have some more work to do. They're doing some other things for outside storage and other things coming forward, but the parking lot addition, that work has been completed.
Additional questions or comments? Concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor, approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to G, 2019 IDOT Bridge Inspections.
Again, memo in your packet, it's time again for our biannual bridge inspections required by IDOT. The inspections will be done by HLR Hampton Lindsay and Renwick, which is our IDOT-approved bridge manager. The bridges will be State Street, Newburgh, Squaw Prairie, Main Street, and the twin bridges on Appleton. The cost of the inspections is a time and material basis not to exceed $8,600, where again, it's in the current budget, 015-360-6140, Engineering Services. I would recommend approval of HLR completing the NBIS biannual bridge inspections required by IDOT at a cost not to exceed $8,600.
Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Sanderson.
Okay, quickly, the Newburgh Road and Main Street, it seems, I don't know, maybe it's all running together for me now, but is, didn't we just, did some improvements on those not too long ago? And they, is there anything in there that they don't need to be inspected at until after five or six years, said 10 years or something? What, what's the deal on that?
No, the rehab work we did on the Newburgh Road Bridge doesn't change the biannual inspection requirement, so that's still required to be done. What it did change was we added scour protection, so we do not have to do any kind of inspections after immediately following flood events because of that scour protection that we installed. So, we no longer have to do that, but the biannual bridge inspections are still required.
Additional, thank you, Alderman. Additional questions or comments? Hearing not all those in favor, approval will, when your name is called, never mind. All those in favor, approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, unanimous. Brings us to H, camera installation at the intersection of Beloit Road and Business 20.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, the next memo in your packet, our existing detector loops at the intersection of Business 20 and Beloit Road need to be replaced. I would recommend that we replace them with a camera detection system. We've received two bids for that work. William Charles Electric, $34,980. Ingle Electric Company, $35,328. I would recommend approval of the proposal from William Charles Electric in the amount of $34,980 to install the camera detection equipment at the intersection of Business 20 and Beloit Road. IDOT will reimburse the city for 50% of the total cost, and this work, our portion of the work will be paid for from line item 015-330-6022. And again, it'll come out of this year's budget.
Motion to approve. Snow, second by Crawford. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Sanderson and Alderman Porter.
Just for the public, too, that, you know, this isn't like red light cameras. This is just for detection of changing the lights, correct?
That's correct. It's to replace the loops, so going forward, then when we do overlays or the road improvements, we don't have to tear the pavement up and redo the loops all the time. Camera system seems to be much more dependable, long-term, and the cost difference is negligible.
Didn't we just upgrade those lights for pedestrian crosswalks or something like that, for handicaps or something like that?
We did those several years ago. But it has nothing to do with the loops.
This won't affect any of the improvements.
There's nothing to do with the loops.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Porter. Okay, anybody else? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, which brings us to the 2019 MFT Street Overlay Program.
Okay, the memo back in your packet tonight, I'm hoping to get direction from the council for approval. That includes our list of streets proposed to be overlaid this year, including arterials and residential's. The note on the bottom, $650,000 budgeted in MFT. Typically, we spend between $400,000 and $500,000 out of our MFT budget, but because the last two years have been, has, have, the prices have been lower than expected, we've resulted in some savings. Unfortunately, through the state program, we can't just, when we get those good prices, we just can't go out and add streets. We have to basically do another project. So, that's allowed us now to budget an extra $150,000 this year. So, that's why you're seeing the $650,000. It does not include any revenue from our new, from our new local motor fuel tax. This is strictly from our MFT funds.
Motion to approve by Sanderson, second by Snow. Questions or comments? Alderman Freeman.
The ones on last year's budgeted list, did we get through all of those? Were they all done, or are some of these holdovers from that?
No, these are all new. We, the ones that were on last year's list were done.
Alderman Snow.
Brent, when we use the funds for the additional fuel tax that we imposed, do we have to do the ADA portion as well, or is that only because we have the motor fuel tax from the state?
Technically, no. Only if we use the IDOT, the motor fuel tax fund, are we required to do ADA. So, you can take that, I guess, for what it's worth. Part of me says that's good, 'cause then we can have a, if you wanna do more overlays, we can do that and not do them. But again, at some point, we're gonna have to do them eventually at some point. So, that's the question, I guess, we'll have to ask ourselves, and council have to decide if we just go ahead and, if we do these on our own, utilizing our, our local funds, do we still do the ADA ramps?
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, which brings us to J, Stormwater Utility Feasibility Study.
As we touched on, as I touched on a little bit earlier in the meeting, previously, we've talked about funding revenue sources that could be utilized for the city going forward. One of those identified funding possibilities was the establishment of a stormwater utility, just like we have water and sewer. It'd be a water utility, sewer sewer utility, and a stormwater utility, where you actually develop a, a cost, a rate, a fee for residents based on the amount of stormwater that runs off a typical property that we have to maintain, handle, and deal with, as you know over off a typical property that we have to maintain, handle, and deal with as you know over time. Um, that's gotten to be more expensive. We've got the south side storm for, storm sewer study done, uh, with a forty million dollar price tag for those improvements. We've got several areas in the north side of town that don't even have any storm sewer that needs to be done. We have the MPDS program required through EPA, which is inspections and reporting and requirements, and now we gotta do some stream sampling as part of that. So the cost involved with our storm sewer system and managing that storm sewer system and maintaining it, it continues to increase. So one of your funding options is to have a dedicated funding source through a stormwater utility, uh, that we could utilize then if we wanna do bond, issue bonds or, or other such funding mechanisms for a major project, major improvements gives us that, uh, that capability. So what you have in your packet tonight is, uh, uh, my request that I put together for, uh, to send out to local engineering for, firms, um, to solicit their interest and their statement of qualifications for completing that. Uh, in the state of Illinois, I think we're somewhere between thirty and forty, um, uh, stormwater utilities that have been established, uh, so we'd be looking at some background information on that. I wanna get a feel from the city council if they still wish to pursue this issue at this time or not. Um, I wanna get some feedback, and if you do, the process will be, um, I'll put this out, we'll get the responses back, um, and then we'll have to rate, uh, those responses to pan, and, and then choose, uh, anywhere from one, two, or three firms to do interviews, uh, to, to actually select who we feel would be the, the best, uh, firm to do the feasibility study, and then we'll sit down and negotiate with that firm a contract to complete that work. Uh, as far as the review, my thought would be that we do the chair, use the chairman and the co-chairman of the Public Works Committee, as well as the mayor, myself, Mr. Anderson, and the city attorney, uh, to be the little review committee. So at this point, I'm just looking for direction from council if you think this is still a good idea, uh, going forward to establish the stormwater utility. This would be our first step in doing that, is having this feasibility study completed.
Show of hands, if we wanna go forward. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, those opposed, don't wanna go forward?
Is this gonna cost us anything, or is this just sending out paperwork to someone to say, hey, are you interested?
Well, this process, yes, we're gonna send this out to, to all the local engineering firms and even not even local regional engineering firms, uh, to get their interest and stuff, and we'll go through this ranking process. It's the end of that process where we've decided, council has decided who we would like to do this work. That's where you sit down and actually do the study. I'm thinking the study's gonna be anywhere probably from, from, I'll say, because I'm not, probably forty to eighty thousand dollars probably to do a feasibility study. Uh, but it's that point where we're gonna actually be talking about dollars spent. Um, but that's the first phase, and, and basically what they're gonna do is then for the feasibility study, they'll look at the requirements that we have, they'll look at our current budgeting, uh, limitations, what we have, they'll look at the size and, and the physical plant that we have on our storm sewer system, same as what was done with water sewer way back when, and they will then decide what your annual expenses are, what you're looking at to generate revenue, to pay for projects, and what you are comfortable with or not comfortable with, and they'll, they'll basically develop what that utility rate structure needs to be in order to fund the things you need to fund and wanna do complete on your stormwater system. And then it'll be up to the council. Once you do that with that feasibility study and you have that information, then again, council's gonna have to decide if they wanna go ahead and go forward, and then through the implementation process, there's ordinances that have to be done, there's a whole lot of other steps. So you're probably looking at least twelve to eighteen months out, if not longer, twenty-four months out before it would actually go into effect.
So basically, we're just sending a survey out that says, are you interested?
Only to, this is just to the engineering firms to do the work. Has nothing to do, that's gonna be a whole nother process to go through with the feasibility study is to engage the residents, engage the, the, um, um, interested parties, the industries and stuff, because let's face it, the more property you own in town, you're gonna have, will have a bigger impact on you than, than the typical residential.
We're not voting to spend money tonight, we're just voting to send out a survey.
That's correct. Good.
Yes, Alderman Sanderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, will this slow down any, uh, improvements on the, uh, over by the school and the south, south side for storm war, sewer problems, uh, because I've been trying to get stuff done over there since two thousand and three. I was looking through old, old articles the other day.
No, it will not slow down anything. If anything, it will, if a stormwater utility is enacted, it will help speed up, uh, projects, 'cause again, that's an additional revenue source that'll allow you to do more work. So it won't slow down anything, it'll just speed up processes. Uh, when we get to the, our budget presentation on Public Works, uh, I'll have a whole list of projects for you for consideration, and that runs the whole gamut of Public Works, from storm sewer projects to street projects to intersection improvements, and all of those, and the, the price tag that I stopped at is about, uh, oh, twenty-five or thirty million dollars. Um, so I've got a whole bunch of projects that we can, that, that, um, are for you guys to review and rank and decide on how you wanna go forward.
Alderman Freeman?
So, um, we had a, we had a south side flooding thing done, I believe Baxter and Woodman, and they came up with like forty-two million-plus dollars to solve that problem. I was under the impression that any, uh, utility tax coming from the water department would be pretty much dedicated to solving that problem first.
No, 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 you don't get confused. Um, the, you passed, so far, the council for additional revenue for the city, you passed a sales tax to be used for capital improvements, hopefully, I mean, that's what I'd vote for. And then you've also passed the local motor fuel tax revenue source. Those are two of the, and I forget how many we had put together. Um, the stormwater utility is another way to look at the method and the way you pay to have that storm sewer system in town, just like water and sewer is not paid for by the general fund. None of that money goes to water and sewer. Water and sewer is self-sufficient. What this project would do would make the storm sewer system self-sufficient. You would charge a fee to residents, like you do for water and sewer, only for our storm sewer, based on how much runoff you're going to create, each of your properties creates, and how much it costs us to manage that system, just like with managing the water sewer system. So that will allow you then to generate revenue, to help pay for not only the operation and the maintenance of the existing system, but improvements to that existing system and expansion of the existing system where it needs to be done. It can only be used for that. It's, so again, that's, those are funds generated to be used, just like water and sewer. We can't take water and sewer and go, and go do other things with it, that has to be used for water and sewer.
It's creating ongoing revenue stream dedicated to solution of that problem in the future and, and from then on. Alderman Snow?
And I think we need to clarify, too. He, when he says residents, he means anybody who, you know, all entities in town. For instance, somebody like Chrysler, who has a large footprint, and most of it is paved or building, therefore it's paved, would have a higher percentage of paying for their portion of it than, say, your house that is a reasonable house on a reasonable lot with reasonable drainage. Um, so it's the, some of the burden is gonna fall upon those people that have high-density structures on the lots, um, and not so much the fact that they own a bunch of open land. Open land is a good thing, and I'm assuming part of the study is the fact that these guys would come up with a way to come up with a formula that allows for all that good.
That's correct, and that's what you see, and again, that's why we call it the feasibility study, because it would, it would point out the intricacies of the city itself, 'cause each one's a little bit different, entity's a little bit different as far as your stormwater goes. Um, you know, right now, I think we have seventy, seventy-two outlets to the river, uh, with storm sewers. Uh, a lot of cities don't have that, some cities have more, but, you know, again, in those seventy-two outlets, we have to inspect those on an annual basis now for our MPDS permit, and like I said, we gotta start doing river sampling after rain events now as part of that requirement, so. It's not getting any easier to manage our storm sewer system. We have more regulations, more things we have to follow through with, more things to do. Financials are not getting any easier, as you know, um, everybody's looking for money, and the stormwater utility is, 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 um, gaining, uh, steam and acceptance in the city, or in the city, in the state, as well as our neighboring states. More and more entities are looking at as a way to fund those, those requirements.
Alderman Snow?
And you may not be able to answer that, but I'm sure you can. In the overall scheme of things, five years down the road, we, we implement the, the fee basis, is that something that's added on to the tax, property tax, um, role, or is that a monthly bill comes in with the water and sewer? What was the parameter?
The initial inclination would be that because we have our own water and sewer utility, that it would be an expansion of, of that bill, it'd be itemized and it'd be separate, would be a separate bill or a part of the water and sewer bill and just listed separately as a separate utility. That's probably the approach, but again, that's another, um, process that the feasibility study would point out would be what's the best, what's the most opportune way to do that, to manage that most effectively. And for the ones that have been established, and again, it depends, the bottom line is how much money needs to be generated to pay for what you wanna see completed. But the ones that have been done, most of them run in the, the four to eight dollars a month range that I've seen. Some are higher, some are closer to twenty. I think there's a couple that are over twenty dollars a month, but they wanted to have some major improvements that they needed done sooner than later, so that's why the fees were, were done that way. But again, each one is, is individual, is of its own, which is why, again, through the feasibility study, those cost ranges would be pointed out.
Gives us a clear view of different options. Alderman Snow?
So I'm assuming, again, just like with the sewer loan, we would potentially be able to go out for a loan and have a revenue stream to pay for it and not...
Do you wanna add to that?
No, I was just gonna add to that. That would be our own revenue stream, so we could do, um, you know, revenue bonds, so we could do a much larger project or projects right up front because we have that revenue stream coming in. So here, again, the work would get done sooner than later compared to our limited funds that we have right now, correct?
So can we see a show of hands, again, to reach out to see who'd be interested in participating in the feasibility study? Okay, unanimous. Okay, now item K, um, and I started this thinking, uh, after our police chief, one of the longest-serving peace officers in the history of the state, uh, retired, I thought it would be a, a nice thing to do an honorary dedication of a street to him. And as we, as I thought about it, I thought the natural place would be that stretch of Menominee Street behind the Public Safety Building, at which point I asked, uh, the chief if he, he was in favor of us doing something like that, and asked for his input on what he might like to have it called. And he said, yes, he would be honored and humbled to have us do that, and he would like to call it Noble Way. So before you tonight is, um, a proposal to rename that portion of Menominee Street behind the Public Safety Building, an honorary, like Brandon Ramey Way, as, 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 as Noble Way.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have a third, I have a fourth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move ahead with that then and take the council for final disposition. Then finally, uh, I believe it was, uh, Alderman Brooks wanted to speak about a leaf burning ordinance.
Uh, Mayor, I'd had a couple people, uh, have problems with the leaf pickup, uh, especially this year when we had a, uh, the northeastern portion of the ward, we had a leaf pickup date or dates that were snowed out. In other words, the people had piled all their leaves up on the curbing, and, uh, from what I understand, the people in charge at, uh, at Public Works, uh, had, were diverted to some other thing that had to be immediately taken care of. They couldn't get to those leaves, and we had a snowfall on top of them. Now, the people are out trying to snow blow their driveways and parkways and whatever, and they're clogging their snow blowers up, and the phone starts ringing, why weren't my leaves picked up? Well, obviously, we didn't get to do it. But I'm, I'm just wondering if the city ever had a leaf burning program where people could pile them at the curb and burn them as long as they were, they were monitored, and, uh, uh, I'm wondering how many man-hours that may save? Just, uh, just in, uh, I hear my friend here chuckling about that, maybe he'll have some input on it. Uh, maybe it would be something that we could look at to save man-hours.
At one time, leaves could be burned in the city, and a lot of times, they burned them in what we would call the gutter, uh, at the street edge, and I was not in the seat at, at the time that this got discussed and changed. Um, there are two sides to the story. Burning leaves is not healthy for people who have respiratory issues, even though it smells great. Um, and so there are, are two sides to this, and just simply something to discuss. Uh, again, it comes down to the fact that, yeah, I didn't get my leaves out to the curb the first week that they were doing leaf pickup either, and then it snowed, and then I had to wait for the snow to melt, and then I had to rake and put them out to leave. They came by and got them, so it, it was an inconvenience, uh, but again, it was the weather which we can't legislate, so, uh, what would you have to share with us, Alderman Sanderson?
I was, I was here, and there was some long discussions we had, and there were sometimes, I think people made comments that it looked like Beirut back when they had, you know, a lot, a lot of leaves burning, and, but there were a lot of, most people probably did a good job, you know, being, but some people, they're, you know, the leaves caught on fire and they have to call the fire department out to it. So I like the smell of burning leaves, too, and, and I was kinda on the other side of it before we passed some stuff. I said, you know, we have to have some ways to make sure that the leaves are picked up. So I would support it if, and, and Brent and, uh, then Director Lawler went out and found a used truck to pick up stuff. But we also talked to the garbage companies, 'cause they wanted to charge a dollar a bag, and you get two maple trees on your lawn and it costs you...
You have a hundred bags.
You know, two hundred dollars a couple of weeks. So, um, you know, we worked with them, even though we have free enterprise, and to my knowledge, they still haven't charged anything per bag, and if they did, then we could start looking at, talking to them again. But, uh, there's other ways to pick up leaves by putting them into bags. You have to purchase the bags and put them out for your garbage, but the garbage companies pick them up also. So, you know, there's two ways, and I think that, you know, we should stay the same way it is and not, can, you know, have burning. We took burning away from the backyards, and then after people got used to the no burning issue, then we allowed people to come back and have fires and stuff in their backyard on a controlled basis in, in pits.
Chief Heiser?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I have a few things here in relation to this. Uh, first of all, like, like you said, Alderman Sanderson, people are getting used to our present, uh, ordinance and how we do things, uh, as far as leaves not burning. Um, I've noticed, uh, in our nuisance calls each year, we seem to decline because I think our citizens are starting to figure it out that we don't burn here, we bag them, and then we have, or we have, um, the street department come by and pick them up, okay? I believe the opportunity, uh, will present itself, uh, for some citizens to burn garbage, furniture, other items that we don't, we don't want burning out there, construction waste, and then I could also see burn complaints going up for our fire department. And I am definitely against changing the ordinance.
Brent, what would you estimate the cost of our gathering leaves? Because, you know, we set a schedule, it's like leaves and branches. We have a schedule for the whole town, we never are able to stick to it because of any number of other things, so we just do it till it's done. What would you estimate our cost of doing that is?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I can tell you, we've got, currently, we have two leaf vacuums that we utilize, two leaf boxes that we've acquired for our trucks. Uh, we spend six weeks on average each year picking up leaves, and that's five people for those six weeks period of time, so it's a good chunk of the street department time, especially when we only have seven employees down there. That's, uh, you know, two-thirds of our workforce doing nothing but leaves. Um, and you'll see in the budget request for coming up is in, for a new leaf machine to replace one of our units, and that's, uh, sixty-five thousand that we've got budgeted for that.
Okay. Alderman Snow? Alderman Snow.
And when I first moved to town and, uh, hooked up with my wife, Terry, there wasn't any leaf pickup, and then they started picking up leaves, and I thought that was great. It's worked out really well, and I realize it's not always the ideal way, and they always seem to come through town, and it, off the top of my head, even though it's not your side of the river, they come through, if they've got time, and they suck up the leaves, they want to get ahead of the curve. Um, I do realize that, yes, I had the same problem, that, you know, leaves were underneath the snow, but quite frankly, you know, the leaf bags weren't great, and, you know, on those occasions, and plenty of people put out the leaf bags. I do think there is a time restriction, I think, with some of the garbage disposal companies as far as when they end their leaf pickup, or their bag pickup and start it up again, but, um, aside from that, I, I don't see an issue. The other question I do have though, Brent, partially related, what about the Christmas trees? I saw somebody throwing one to the curb on my street, and what is our current status on that, just FYI?
Well, Christmas tree collection is at the street department until the eighteenth of January, um, where they can bring them, bring the trees down there, then we will take care of them.
So they need to get them there, and then they're good to go?
Alderman Brooks.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, withdraw my comment regarding the leaves, and, uh, let's continue burning, okay? I mean, bagging them.
So are we all-
Sorry, chief.
Anybody want to make a motion to change the way we do it, or, okay? Well, hearing that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment of tonight's festivities. I have a motion by Alderman Sanderson, I have a second by Alderman Borowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It was a very productive evening. Drive safely getting home.